Okay, it's 6:00 PM, August 28th. And this is a selectmen's meeting. I'd like to open the meeting. Select persons present are Jeff and Josh. Mike is out sick. Employees Michelle is present, and we have some public present. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Item two on the agenda is open session. This is normally limited to two minutes per extension, per chair. First person on the agenda is Beth Rowell with concerns about flooding.
Hello.
Hi Beth.
So, I know you guys have so much to do already, but since Chris and I have owned the property down there for the redemption, we do flood when we get a good rain. So, a couple Thursdays ago, we had eight inches of water in the redemption. We've been working or trying to get DOT over the years to address the issue, which we know there's some issues. The pipes aren't connected from one drain to the other. The one over here doesn't allow the water to go, so it backs up and then it pours across the sidewalk into the redemption. DOT right now, I think, is still on our, we don't care. We're not fixing it, not our problem. And the only resolution I could think of to maybe limit the amount of times that the redemption floods, because I'm moving to the other side of the building, so I'll be working on the flood side, would be to put a curb there, because there's not a curb across that one way, because there used to be a crosswalk there and it was handicap accessible, but now it's all at the intersection. So, I hear that you guys have to deal with sidewalk issues and I was just wondering if maybe we could get a curb stuck in there so I have a few inches to help before I flood out.
I drove by and looked at what you were talking about. I talked to Chris about it the other day in the store. I kind of see what you're saying there.
Something, I don't know.
Following what you're saying there.
DOT's response was, "It's not our problem. Your building sits below the street level." And I said, "Well, it's not my problem. My building was built before there was a street and a sidewalk." So, that was it. I just, it would be nice if maybe I didn't flood as often right now.
The former owners of the building did also try to give DOT to do some stuff over the years and were unsuccessful. I've tried for years.
Have you guys recently talked to DOT?
I did recently talk to them.
Yeah, I just had him come out last week and they were not very nice.
Who did you talk to? Do you remember?
I don't, he's the guy from Guilford, the head guy. I don't even remember his name, but he just really was like, "I'm not gonna do anything about it." And I'm like, you know, "It's also sinking in." And he was like, "Yeah, I'm not gonna do anything about that either." So, it really didn't anywhere near me.
Bobby Surlo maybe? Is it Bobby Surlo?
He was like a hefty fellow, maybe a little older than me.
The guy that was up there retired a few years ago.
Right.
The engineer out of Bangor retired a few years ago as well. The one that was working on this.
You're talking about Bob Davis?
Yes. Part of the problem is, we don't have a town crew anymore. And it's been too many years, in my opinion. But Mr. Drummond used to go around and make sure these drains were all cleared out, even though it's the state's responsibility. The drain on the corner of School Street and Main Street has been bugged up for well over a month.
Yep, I've seen that one backed up.
It just, the leaves come down the hill, stop the flow of water into the drain, and then it goes everywhere else.
Well, we obviously can't make any promises to you because we're, it's, we're kind of in the same situation. I think we may have more leverage than you. What do you think, Josh? Ask the question, see what they say?
Right. So, it's coming, when the drain's plugged, it's going right across the road and coming out into you?
Well, it doesn't have to be plugged.
I didn't introduce myself on the tape. My name's Chris Rowell. I own a couple properties, sorry Chris. But I'm gonna draw on the board and show you literally what I'm talking about. Right? This is Main Street, from a slice perspective. Okay? So, we've called, in here would be 105.
That's the redemption.
Yeah, one over here would be 111. This is 109. Right?
Yep.
So, this is the street, okay? We have a catch basin in here.
Yep.
Right? Where the two-foot culvert comes out.
On your side of the road or on the other side of the road?
On ours. Building's side of the road. Okay, that connects to the basin across the street by the fire. The one that doesn't have a leaf catch. A leaf catch would allow the leaves to just go over the drain and down in and out. That's all I've been asking for for a decade, is right there, put a leaf catch in. They've done drilling, they have closed us down for a couple days, three days for that, to do more drilling, to not find ledge that the contractor said was there. I already knew the ledge wasn't there because the Water District and Sewer District told me there was no ledge there when they did their projects. So, in 89, the contractor lied on his paperwork and said he couldn't put a drain between this catch basin and this catch basin. Okay?
This is the catch basin that's back in the redemption.
This is the catch basin that can't handle the flow of water coming off of the hill. Because it's not just coming off of School Street. It's everything coming down Main Street, coming down Church Street, coming out of this parking lot, coming off of Pleasant Street. I mean, it's a huge amount of water when it happens. And it's, you know, there was one year it happened ten times, one summer. One summer, that building flooded ten times. I sent videos to DOT, I sent them, you know, photos. I sent them photos of the drain. This drain took, you know, this drain goes this way, toward Downey Hill. And actually, that's not even after it, because it goes like this. Right? This catch basin is eight inches higher than the catch basin it feeds to. Or eight inches lower. The one, so the pipe is always underwater here. Because the catch basin that it connects to is higher.
So, the only drain this basin goes this way?
Yep. Having fifty feet of drain this way would alleviate the flooding.
And that is in the state roadway or in the sidewalk area?
That is right by the sidewalk.
It's in the state roadway.
It's in the state roadway, so technically the building's.
My only, I'd like to thought of a curb. The downfall to it is it doesn't fix the problem.
No, it doesn't.
It's just gonna hold a bunch of water right in front of your place too. You know, it's gonna create that problem then.
The curb, the curb is not gonna be high enough to solve the problem.
Right.
That was DOT's solution. I mean, the guy was not very nice to me. It was just me down there and he was, and he told me, he was like, you know, "I'm not trying to be a jerk." He said, "But, I'm not gonna do anything." And he's like, you know, "Your best bet, the solution I can give you is ask for a curb to give yourself a little..." Like, anything at this point. I have to work over there. I don't want to be trampling through water or not opening because of them flooding out.
2014, when they redid the pavement. 1410, something like that. They paved the road. They came in and they raised all of the catch basins except for this one. And I begged and pleaded with them not to. And they did eventually listen to me. And after they did the paving job, they came back and put additional pavement across in front of my door to raise it up more and try and get water. It works until...
Till you get a three-inch storm.
No, until the catch basin across the street over here, on this side of Main Street, clogs up. Then we're, then it's over. And I've spent years pulling leaves out of that drain and I'm not around anymore. And when it happens overnight like it did the other day, I heard it raining and I didn't think anything of it. And then I was, we got up and I was like, "Oh shit." So, the catch basin over here on the corner of Downey Hill is higher than this catch basin. This catch basin is not connected to this catch basin. And there will be a monkey in the works because when the state did the sidewalk here in front of 109, they never addressed the foundation issue or the entryway that is still underneath the sidewalk.
Now, is there, there's like an alleyway in between these two buildings, right?
Yeah, sure. You can call it that.
This is higher than here.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, so the water pools up, right? You got School Street and Main Street. You got the catch basin right here on the corner. That catches up with leaves. You have another catch basin here that's always covered as well. Like I said, that's one. When we hit Public Works, Peter Drummond did a great job. And he really did. I, when they, all of that was awful. I miss Peter. He was a great guy. He did a great job with the roads. Did a great job for the town. Unfortunately, that, you know. My motion is, find us Public Works again. That, that is what we need, guys. We really do. You know, when, when they lost the town crew, the fire department became responsible for trees and other issues that, and, and as a thank you, they got their budget cut.
Right.
So, this one catches up too. But this parking lot over here, there's a catch basin here, there's a catch basin here, and there's a low spot here, there's a low spot here. So, the water comes down and then crosses the street pretty much in that alleyway. And I'm, you know, I own almost two of that building. If the state wanted to put another catch basin here and run it out, have at it. You know? When I bought this building, this culvert that's here is literally on top of the previous culvert that's still there. And they built the soil up on a wooden wall and didn't do anything for the property owner at the time to, you know. When I bought the building, it was robed. I had twenty-six feet. They had nothing. I could grab the wall and just shake it.
Well, it's...
I don't know what you guys can do, but, you know, at a minimum, there's a guy that lives right in town, at least one, that works for DOT, that drives by this every day and never bothers to tell his boss that drain's clogged. That would, that's the simplest solution right there, is to just deal with that. Because if that stays open, it doesn't generally flood. I mean, you get the freak storm here and there.
Yeah.
But what we got the other night wasn't a freak storm. That, I mean, it was a good chunk of terrain, don't get me wrong, but that's not, that was not, that shouldn't have flooded.
So, I think the, I think what's gonna happen is we're gonna have the same conversation that Chris and Beth had with DOT and see if they have the same attitude and then decide what to do.
I agree. I mean, I don't mind the curb and idea. I just think the problem is still gonna be there. I mean, it wouldn't look better, you know, to a brother.
Yeah.
It would look better.
But if it doesn't cure the problem, it's a waste of time, really, other than looking better.
Well, like I said, that was just, that's what they told me. So, I was like, "Wow, I gotta do something."
Bottom line.
So, do we, anyone want to make that phone call?
Yeah, I can. I'm playing that role, so I'll do that.
Steve was the guy I talked to at Bangor.
In Bangor?
Yeah, he's the head of Division Three. I don't remember the last name, but for sure it began with an H. A knock, parenting maybe.
That sounds good. Do we need a motion there?
It was more just a discussion.
We'll follow up next week on that selectmen's meeting. So, that's what we're gonna do. Josh is gonna follow up on the phone calls with the same people and he can see if they're mean to him.
And I'll also be able to let you know how I make out.
Good luck. I appreciate it. I'm not trying to give you more work. I'm just trying to make my job a little more easier.
So, you don't have to wear your galoshes to work?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that sounds good.
I want to keep that building and I want to lift it up.
Yep.
There's no point in me lifting it up if it's just gonna keep flooding.
Right.
The damage, the worst of the damages is already up.
Sounds good, we're gonna move on.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you so much.
Item B, under item two. Sonia...
I have this in the mail because I didn't...
Dari?
I think so.
Wants to request being put on a list for having a culvert installed at 103 Bean Hill Road. So, I guess at this point, somebody's gonna look at it and determine that...
I tried, I called her and to see if it was a new one or if it's an old one and there's an issue with it. I haven't heard anything back. I mean, if it's a new one, alls we have to do is okay it. Where it's put and tell her what size and what length she can put in there. And then after that, it's, that's on her on a new one.
I think one of her ideas was that she could just go like the other resident and go put it in. Because she had been talking to a neighbor.
But she can, if it's a brand-new one, she can.
Right.
But it has to be approved by the road commissioner. So, I guess I figured that I would look at it and then we could approve it.
Like, this is Sam's. There's the product. And there's her explanation. For all we talked about. These were last time. I don't know if we ever followed through with those. They were still in my pile.
Basically, what it says right here. So, have you, have you looked at that, Josh?
I haven't gone and looked at it because I was, I weren't gonna drive out of my way if it was a brand-new culvert and I didn't even know where it's going. You know, but if it was an old culvert, then yes, I guess I, I could've gone and looked at it, you know, but... But she didn't really stay there if it was...
Okay, so you're saying, you're saying if this is a new entrance, she's responsible for the first one?
Our culvert ordinance, the landowner, is responsible for the first one. After that, we replace them and they're ours.
So, as long as this is a replacement of a bad culvert?
Right. But even, even at a brand-new one, alls we have to do is approve it and tell her what she has to have for a size.
Again, Josh, we'll drop that one in your lap.
No, I'm all over it.
So, we're finding things for Josh to do tonight. Okay, moving on. C, Louis Harper. Closing of the road is illegal, Flanders Hill culvert work.
I believe, are you Mr.?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm gonna sit if you don't mind. It's been a long day.
Yeah, feel free.
I pulled off of a road headed down to Flanders Hill Road from San yesterday afternoon and saw a piece of wood with a hand-printed sign, "Road Closed." And I said to my wife, "One, road can't be closed. There's no firemen here, there's no cop here. It's a hand-printed sign. I'll bet those kids that live in those houses are having a hell of a good time and they're laughing." So, we drove around the sign, went on our way, got down to where the crew was working, and the road was closed. So, I said, "We're sitting there waiting. It can't be closed all day. We've had no notice. Nobody's told us." Now, I'm gonna tell what could have been the scenario. You can deal with this any way you want to. Check with your attorney. I could've been home, got out, did my business, and one of my two kids who have seizure disorders could've had a seizure. Let's say it was the eighteen-year-old. He has a shunt. The only place that kid needs to be is Main Medical to have a shunt revision, which is brain surgery. Loaded with the car, you head down the road and you go boogie as fast as you can, talking to the neurosurgeon on the phone as you go. Sometimes you stop in Pittsville Hospital for Stabilization, but you still keep going. You know what, Mayo doesn't have a neurosurgeon or a neurologist or anything, so you gotta get going in the right direction. If I had gone down there, there's a truck sitting in the middle of the road and the road is closed and had to turn around because I didn't know, I hadn't been out during the day, hadn't seen the hand-painted sign at the other end of the road, I'd have gone the other way to Dexter and wasted a whole bunch of time. Date, a email, put it on the, in the newspaper, put it on radio, do whatever. There's lots of ways to get the word out that sometime in the near future, hopefully on this date, where the permitting, we're going to be replacing culverts and have to close Flanders Hill Road while that happens. Would've alleviated, could've alleviated emergency. Alleviated a great problem. If I'm wrong, if I'm off-base, tell me. The whole neighborhood will shut up and none of us will bother. I'm kind of here as the spokesperson because nobody, you know. You don't need six people in here saying the same thing.
So, your feeling or recommendation to us would be to put up a sign posting the closing a day or two before we do the job?
Like you do, the posted signs for weight limits. You know, you usually give us some notice that there's gonna be, you know, anything, anything, so that we see them. But a hand-painted sign that looks like it's written by some kids, I said, "Yes, it's not a regulatory sign. It's nothing the town put up." It didn't even say on it, "Per town of San Diego." You know, I ignore the sign. I ignore any sign. I was on the fire department's too long to know. You close, you can absolutely, in a case of emergency, you have a perfect right to close it, but you post a fireman standing there. DOT posts flag people. They're not no longer flagmen. Flag people out there waving flags saying, you know, "Stop ahead, road closed." Turned around, go the other way, here's how you do a detour. There was nothing. Now, today, the road was half-closed and they got a guy telling you when to come through. No problem. That didn't happen yesterday and I'm afraid she might've taken the brunt of my anger. But somebody needed to know, "You can't do this." You know?
Well, so I, I tried looking up the law and I, I can't find anything that says we can't shut down a road to do work. Not for other reasons, I, I don't know. And maybe there is one somewhere, but I, in the short amount of time I've had to look for it. But I, I'll take the blame on this one because it's, it's a, I was supposed to have it put on our website last Friday when we put on for the Pleasant Avenue. But I think I missed it. So, it was supposed to be out there, which is put on our Facebook page and Pleasant Avenue and our town site at the same time.
So, to, to make this, to make this smoother in the future, you guys have had a minute to think about it. Do you think that when we're gonna do a full road closure, that a sign a day or two before with the, just a posting of when it's gonna be closed would be adequate to make everybody happy?
Absolutely. Because if I didn't go out there today, one of the neighbors would say, "Hey, you know what's gonna be closed?" You know, "Word happens." Down there. And I'll never blame the, the guys on the road. We see each other every day. We're talking about news and stuff that's going on. We were making fun about something the other day that you don't even know about. The boss, the town was doing something. I said, "Man, they never took physics."
So, I guess, as Josh said, we'll apologize for our bad experience there and we'll try to use this to make things better.
Well, if I didn't come, you'd never know there's a problem.
That's correct. That is correct.
And you never know how pissed a whole bunch of San Diego people up.
Constructive criticism is very effective, usually. You, that's the best way to resolve is just constructively criticize what you've, you've done.
I've tried. I don't want to have anybody get angry because life's too short, but I knew unless somebody comes in and says, "We're not gonna stop for a sign. It looks like one of the kids down at the corner made it." You know? If you put up a sign and say, "Detour, road closed, detour," I wouldn't have gone past that sign first. But it didn't look like I needed to believe it.
Okay. Well, point taken and we will, we will work towards a solution to that.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thanks for bringing it in.
Oh, glad to.
Okay. Moving on, item three, signing of the minutes of the board meeting.
We didn't uphold those because you didn't get them to be able to review. So, we'll go back to the next meeting.
Table that till next week. Okay, item four, reviewing the treasurer's warrants. Payroll fifty-six, accounts payable fifty-seven.
You will also see on your AP warrant, which is the one under, I have put on the retainer fees for our next project. We also have this one. I don't know if you've been up there and looked at it and I just bring that up. All right, see, all right.
So, where are the retainer fees, Michelle? I see the street signs from a previous meeting.
You should see Wentworth on that list. Please tell me you see Wentworth on there.
I do not. Great idea, okay, I do see. It says contract for engineering.
Yes.
Okay, so this whole section is...
Yes. I broke it up, heard the bill. You need a motion in a second on that one.
Okay, we'll make a motion to accept the warrants as written.
Second.
Vote. It's a vote. Okay, item six, old business. And item A is an update on FEMA.
So, I was seeing that from the emergency management company, agency in Dover, I was working with Jeff Libby on all the water damage that was done during the storm of, I don't know if it was December, January, but one of the storms. She has signed the last of the paperwork. We're just waiting for the money to come in. So, and I gave her permission to go ahead and sign that paperwork. She knew what she was doing and what Jeff had worked with her. I had no clue, so...
And which, which damage is it that, that this is for?
That is some washout roads. I think there was a couple trees down.
Same thing we just dealt with on Flanders Hill. There was some on Line Road, a little bit on Borough.
Okay, so there's road stuff.
I feel, I feel like they ended up putting some in the main Bean Hill because of washouts.
So, nothing we need to act on, just an update?
Nope, just update.
Okay. Moving on, item seven, new business. Item A is tax club for taxpayers. And this is an idea suggested by a resident.
So, we had a lady come in a while ago and mentioned doing a tax payment plan, tax club. And I really didn't know much about it, didn't know how it would work. So, I told her some of the ways you could pay for it. She came back just recently and asked again. So, she actually gave me a name of a person in Dexter that does these tax clubs. And they run them from October to March. By doing that, it doesn't delay the lien if the person doesn't pay. They sign a contract. If they're late on their payment, then they come out of the tax club, they then stop paying interest, and they pay like everybody else.[1791.04] And they pay like everybody else, as long as they're on time and with their payments, then they are interest free. Now Dexter is a council set up. So my question, I called her today, but I didn't get a hold of her, I left her a message and I'll check next week, but. Their council, so council approves it every year for this to be done and waive the interest for the tax clubs. They have between a hundred and a hundred and fifty people that, that do this. So for Guilford, I'm sorry, for San Diego, we're a council, we're on a select board. I wonder if we have to actually go out to the public on an annual town meeting and get voted from the people to do this. This I don't know the answer to.
I wouldn't, my, my assumption is yes.
That, that's my idea too.
Which is okay.
I mean, we're making decisions on that income stream as a town and that's kind of a town.
Right.
Decision.
Especially where in your warrant, the town votes on the interest rate, they, they tell us when to start the interest. All of that, so it, it only makes sense to me to put it out to the townspeople to vote to do this process.
And you and I had talked too, the other, the other way of looking at it is doing it instead of an after the fact, do it before the fact as an anticipated.
Like, like a prepayment.
Tax club, start in March and collect until, you know, the two percent expires.
Right.
If it's paid, then you get their two percent. I think all of this needs to go to the people. And it, it, actually, you know, with the fact that taxes have gone up and it's a struggle for some people, I think this might be a creative way to.
To help them.
Ease it.
Yep. And when I get a hold of, um, Marilyn, um, on Tuesday, I'll find out about the, doing the tax club prior to taxes and see if they've tried that.
I think, I think if we, if we opted to do it before, it takes that, it takes that. Lull in the money stream through the summer after June and supplements it with anticipated tax payment. I don't know what the law says about not being committed to taxes and collecting tax and I don't know if there's.
In your town warrant, in your town meeting, um, there's an article that allows me, you have to have the townspeople vote to be able to actually take prepayments.
Right.
So.
There is a line in there for.
Yep.
Well, that's good enough.
So basically you couldn't start the club until after March, I think that's when we have our town meeting.
Right, our town meeting is supposed to be March, yeah.
That'd be a good timeframe from March until the taxes are due.
Yeah.
That's when the income stream is the lowest for the town.
Right.
It would, it would benefit the taxpayer to be in a club and it would benefit the town to have the income stream when we need it.
Right.
But I think, I think you are correct, I think it has to go to the people to make this decision, which will probably be March, just town meeting.
Yeah, I would think so, yes, and I'll do some more research, uh, we have a network that we can email all the clerks in the state. I'll see what they're doing, um, going to a class next week, I'll do some, um, talking to people there too and see what they, what they do.
I think it's a really good idea, especially with the big jump that the taxes took last year, this past year.
It doesn't prevent the lien from going on, it's still if they don't pay the full amount, but it at least would make the lien less if they, you know, if they take part in that, so. There's some benefits to it.
We need to keep it on the radar so that it ends up in the.
Absolutely.
Okay, new business, item B, Wentworth Engineering on the Town Hall Building.
Yes, so I talked to, um, Wentworth this morning, I actually emailed them last night before I went home. She called my cell phone today, made sure that I had, she had got the message, she checked with Steve to make sure that he was willing to work with. Rich Campbell from the, um, Campbell Environmental Group. Um, I also touched base with Rich to make sure if we hired the Wentworth Company for the engineers, that they would be willing to work with them. He encourages us to go to the Wentworth environment, um, engineers. So everybody is happy with everything, um, so far, so I have the contracts here, I'm gonna have you sign a couple extra just because I would.
And before we get there, we oughta, we oughta just have you bring us up to speed on. As a town, we've applied for some grant money to help with the renovation of this building. And these people's names are talking about, you want to give us an update, Michelle?
Sure, um, we started out, um, working with Ben, um, from Benjamin, he actually was part of, um, broadband. But he was in the office and he works with Rich Campbell Environmental Group. Um, he brought it to Rich Campbell concerning the building and trying to preserve it, he's very interested in preserving it. Um, and come to find out, the program is actually called Brownfields Investment. Uh, Brownfields have done a bunch of money, uh, have been given a bunch of money from the Biden, um, administration. They have actually worked on the mill in Dover, rest, restoring that, um, they have done Versal Paper. They've done, um, many other nursing homes and different things like that, repurposing them and making sure they're environmentally safe. Um, they have options for grants that we could, um, take part in. Um, they have many different avenues and ideas and things that we can work with. So I think between the two companies, we'll be able to get the building up and running, preserve its old style. But still be able to use it for new things.
So the contract you have is for Wentworth and then this contract enters us into an agreement to move forward on the engineering part?
It does, and they will see us all the way through to the end of the project. And there are three copies there. Yep, we're the yellow, we're the yellow paper. Yes.
I've read, I have read this. In fact, this is, when, when we interviewed Wentworth, this is the, the proposed contract.
Yes, yep, and I made copies so that we would have an original signature, he would also have an original signature form. It only says town manager, but we don't have one, so I would believe it would be the board that would sign the, the document.
So how do you want us to do this?
Um, just cross town manager out. You can put your name and select them right next to it, I would think.
Do we all sign the same contract or?
Yeah, I would sign, yeah. Then we'll have an original signature in our office and I'll get Sam to mail them their copy. It's gonna be the Mondays.
Today is twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth month.
Yep, sign right beside our.
Yeah, as long as we're all.
As long as I have two signatures from the board, I'm good. We haven't actually got to a. Application stage yet for grants from this company, but they do need to set up a walk through. I talked to Rich and he said the next two weeks are really kind of busy for him, the thirteenth is a definite no, he can't do anything there. Um, just who would like to walk in through the process or walk in through the building? I also called MMA to make sure that we were all set, having somebody go into the building that's gonna work on it and they were okay with that.
I'd like to be present for that, I've, I've got some knowledge of what's going on over there.
Exactly.
Like to do that as soon as we can too, I mean.
Yep.
Wednesdays do not work for me, um, unless it's gonna be late like that meeting, I'm gone every Wednesday.
Um, you tell me what.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay, anytime during that day?
We'll make it happen. Do you want to be present for that, Josh?
I, I mean, I wouldn't mind, but. I've been fifteen, twenty hours, we just, just running it seems like, so.
Me too.
You know? The people should probably know this, the funds for this are coming from that, how much was it that we appropriated as annual?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do.
An emotion.
Um, actually, just to update you, I did the financial piece a little while ago. Um, you had raised ten thousand dollars for town hall renovations. Um, we had used part of it, we'd used twenty-six hundred, we had a balance of seventy-eight, seventy-three hundred left in that account. And I'm not sure exactly what his fees were. His are ninety-eight, so we're not gonna get into the forty-one thousand very far, like a thousand dollars into that, so. We'll burn off the, the seventy-three and we're just starting to dip into the other stuff. So if we look at maybe the week of the sixteenth, Jeff, do you think you wanna do that or do you wanna go the, the week of the, the ninth? The only day he said he couldn't was the thirteenth.
It doesn't matter to me, I'll pick a Monday, we'll do it on Monday.
Okay, let's look for the sixteenth, is that too far away for you?
Makes no difference to me, I just schedule it, that's all.
Okay, that will give you both time to.
And I don't know, if he, if we did it late in the day, Josh, is that something you can do or?
Oh, I mean.
Oh, if we did a four o'clock on a Monday or something, does, does that make it doable? We know Mike can do it anytime, Mr. Retard.
Well, I mean, I can make it work unless somebody goes down and really has to be going, but other than that, I can.
Is there a time of day that works better for you?
Yeah, I mean, afternoons are always better, you do that at four o'clock in the morning, but I don't think you would answer me.
Probably not. Okay, so we'll aim for the sixteenth at like four.
Late in the day, yeah, that'd be great.
So I'll touch base with him when I come back on Tuesday. So then you're next.
Now, do we need a motion to submit this contract?
Yes, you do.
So I'd, I'd like to make a motion to submit the contract, Wentworth Engineering signed by Jeff and Josh. A vote, it's a vote.
Perfect. So then the next big thing, um, let's see, we, we took care of D in the process of that.
We did.
So the next thing is Eagle, um, Network Solutions. They did a really good presentation with us, um, Caleb, um, I found this company actually on the MMA website, he came up and talked to us. And the price is half of what JS Rollins was. Is that right, SJ, SJ Rollins, SJ Rollins? So they also have, um, a person on their team for IT services that is familiar with Trio. That's the big piece for everybody is Trio is very cumbersome sometimes and somebody needs to know how to do it. Um, I would cross me out and you and Jeff both sign just like you did the other one. It's gonna be a thousand dollars to get us started, I did not put that on the warrant this time, um, I have not talked to Caleb. To see exactly how he wants to do it, have a check present when he comes up to get started. Um, last I knew, it was gonna be about two weeks before he could actually get our computers on the list.
One thing I thought about afterwards, after he talked on that, the laptop. We should ask him if, uh, if that goes out. And he uses the internet, does it still have the same security as it would if it was in the office?
Oh, okay, good question, okay.
So what we have is a contract with Eagle Network Solutions, um, to bring our new computers online. And start setting us up for a, for a regular IT service and maintenance, right?
Right, yes.
And security.
And security.
And security. Um, I also was messing around on the state website looking for grants and I did find they have a. Recommended. Pro, a recommended IT security program that they, it's huge. Cyber, cybersecurity plan, this is state domain has put this together. And we can use this along with the grant that, um, Kathy Mateo from Lewiston sent us. And maybe Eagle can actually get the grant to take care of some of the security stuff. So I will talk to Caleb when I get a chance to on Tuesday and confirm all of that.
I think this is gonna be a positive change.
I think so, um, I'm not good with technology whatsoever, I'm lucky I can turn it on sometimes. So security, I'm, I'm very naive when it comes to that, I just trust everybody, well, in today's world you can't, so. IT is, uh, security is, we have to have it now.
We have to have it.
Yep.
We live in that world.
Yep, we do.
So we'll make a motion that we submit the contract to Eagle Technologies to begin our IT service. Second vote, it's a vote. Okay, item eight is, is our town clerk's report.
So we have, um, we had a report from the state domain on our landfill. Um, it had been mowed, it had some other issues with it, um. I emailed the gentleman that walked into the inspection just to see, does he need us to send him anything proving that we've followed up? We've mowed, we have taken care of whatever issues there were, I haven't given the answer back. But Josh has been out and I think you discussed it last time, didn't you?
Yeah.
So as soon as I get a follow-up with this guy, just to make sure that we've dotted all our i's.
And this landfill is the old dump out on Route twenty-three.
Yes, yep.
Okay. Item B on your, on your report, um.
Yes, we have another application that came in, I sent it by email to you, but I'm not exactly sure if you had a chance to check out.
Yes, I've read this one.
Had to, okay, I printed it just in case.
Yep, I have read that one.
So that brings us to the next piece of the puzzle, we have been trying to get a town manager since February. Here we are at the end of August, we do have some applications, some local, some not so local. Where would you like to go with us?
I feel like it's time to, um. Arrange time and sit down and conduct our interviews, I've been thinking about it quite a bit. I think forty minutes is enough time for an interview and twenty minutes for us to talk about it and I think we could do two or three and then, you know, you know, even, probably two. I've looked at the list, I've looked at the qualifications. And in my opinion, I think we have four or five really qualified candidates.
Agreed.
So at this point. I think we need to figure out how to set up our interviews, now the other piece of this is. We've received Sammy's resignation and we're gonna be looking to fill that position too, have, have we got any?
We have nothing yet.
We have no applicants in that.
I had one girl, um, come in and just talk to me a little bit, um, she expected an application to fill out. No, you just need to give us your resume, either drop it off at the office, mail it in or email it to me. Um, I had, and I checked my email before I left and we don't have any. Um I had, and I checked my email before I left and we don't have anything else.
So what we need to talk about, again, Mike, Mike seems pretty flexible, he's not here. He's says he's retired, he can do what we need to do, so, that's what he said in the last meeting. So we're gonna hold him to that. Scheduling, what do you think, Josh, um we need, we need to figure this out.
I would like to see personally three in the evening, just because. The less naive is the better, you know.
I agree.
Other than that, I've never interviewed anybody, I've never sat in a seat and done that, so as far as.
There's all kinds of different ways to do it, some some towns use an interview committee. Some people have everybody present that that person's gonna be working with. There's different, different ways of doing it.
Right.
I think the bottom line comes down to what we put out for parameters, I really truly think there's four people. That have applied that that really.
These, these are the applications that I had spotted. I don't know really if these people are the same people that you have your eyes on.
I looked at number one qualifications that they had, basically the budget experience being big. Managing people experience and. For me, as a resident of Sangville and listening. To the people of Sangville talk. The more local, the better, I I think the people wanna see somebody that's truly from right here.
They need to have a vested interest in the area, absolutely, and I think the furthest. Like a thirty minute radius from here, I mean, if something happens that you need to have. Somebody on site to be supervising, you gotta have that person available. You know, cause they might get called out in the middle of the night, you don't know.
So that being said, we got, we've gotta schedule it and we've gotta make the decision. Are we looking for thirty, thirty two, forty hours? And we've gotta, we've gotta make a clear outline when we do the interview, what we're looking for.
Exactly, because we're coming up on budgeting.
That's right.
You know, so whatever you present for the end of this year is gonna be the budget for the next year. So you've got a teeter totter going on.
That's right.
Um the thing is, the person coming in, we have a lot going on, it it could take a lot of time to learn this budget. To learn the town, to learn the grants, the stuff that they're coming into. So do you wanna give them forty hours to start until they get their feet under them and then cut them back to twen- you know, thirty two? And the policy says you need thirty two hours to have health insurance. So that would be, you know, what does the person need, do they need the health insurance?
Right.
Maybe they don't need the health insurance.
And these are all questions we need to ask in the interview, but. Reading all of the applications. One of the problems we've had with town managers always has been. Their title was town manager slash road commissioner. And I think there's been talented people walk out the door because of that piece of the puzzle, because of the road commissioner duties.
Right.
And I. Where we are right now, I don't wanna set us up for failure. So we make this higher, if there is no road commissioner ability, we can't expect them to do it.
Right.
We want, we wanna move forward, positively move forward and not. You know, I mean, when you look back at our track record over the last seven or eight years, and we had about six town managers.
You're getting a lot more than that.
So, and what I'm saying is I don't wanna be there.
Right.
I want somebody to come in, sit down, do the job, be a fixture, be s- be somebody that the people of the town.
We need to keep them more than a year, we need to keep them.
I'm shooting for retirement party.
Yeah.
I don't know if we've ever had a retirement party for a town manager, have we?
Right.
I don't think so. I'm here for a retirement until you, or until you kick me out, so.
Okay, so. As far as the. The interview itself goes. We need, we need to come up with what we, what we wanna present to them. And do we do it on an individual basis and fly by the seat of our pants, or are we gonna ask them all the same questions?
I think to get a real answer, you need to ask the same questions all the way across the board.
I do too. I've started my little handwritten list of what I'd like to know from them, I don't know if you guys have or not.
Like I said, I've never doing this before, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be learning through this process, so. I'm sure I'm gonna have questions arise during it, you know, but.
Okay, so the, and the other thing we have is the scheduling. We gotta, we gotta schedule this and we gotta make it happen.
Right.
I mean, what if we have a candidate that we think is good that just can't meet our evening scheduling right now? Cause of other issues, you know.
I mean, I hate to give up a Saturday morning, but that might be an option too.
Yeah.
Well, then you need to let me know which candidates you've picked. So that I, so I can make the phone calls.
So do you want each one of us to review the applications, bringing our picks to you? And that will tell us.
And then I can, then I can.
If we all pick the same four people, we pretty much know that's the four people or five people.
Right, yeah, but if you have four and your four are different than Jeff's four, you know, I need to make sure that I. I corral all of you and say, this is what you've given me. What withstand them, let me know who I call first.
Which in theory would be a week from today.
Right.
And I was hoping to get moving on some of these things sooner than a week from today.
Then next week, I'm, I'm in and out next week.
I know.
So on Wednesday, when you have your board meeting, your normal board meeting, I'm gonna be coming back from Bangor. So I'm just barely gonna be getting here when the meeting starts. So I might scoot out of my meeting just a little bit, so usually they'll have a half an hour that I can scoot out early. So, but I'll be here for that meeting, Sammy will, I'll have Sammy get us the things, I'll give her a list and have her get certain things ready for me.
So, what are your thoughts, Josh, on the scheduling? You, you think we ought to just make our picks, give them to Michelle and I? I think we're all, I think we're probably, if you, if you read all the resumes, it comes down to the same thing.
Right.
I think we'll all be in the same place.
Yeah. At this point, I don't. We gotta do it, so I mean, the sooner they can do it, the sooner we are.
Do you think, do you think an hour per person is too much, did we give them all in one day?
So, okay, so let's, let's flip this around a little bit. We're having a meeting that we normally don't have because it was supposed to be a work session. So what if next week we have interviews on Wednesday and not have a regular meeting?
What if we got this table till next week, we got some stuff we gotta deal with, so.
I thought about that on the way here, my only thought about that is, is that. We decided in the very first meeting, the three of us sat down together, we were gonna do meetings on the first and the third. And for people that don't listen to this and don't look at anything, they plan on us having a meeting next.
Very true.
You know, and even if we just have a really short one, say. Half an hour, then put in a few.
Yeah.
You know. I do feel like we should, I mean, unless it's.
I agree with you.
We should have it, you know.
I think I, I think our biweekly select board meetings need to happen as scheduled. Have you, have you had any contact with these people other than collecting their resumes?
No.
You haven't?
Only one.
The one that we interviewed previously.
The previous board had interviewed, he's the only one that I've had contact with, everyone else, I have not.
Okay, so what do you think of this, Josh, if we have Michelle make, make contact?
Should we keep the first interviews? Short. Because we may weed out a few.
In the first?
I mean, it stinks to, to, to extend it, but. It's, it's a thought, I've never been through that process, but I know of a lot of people who have been through that process where you have multiple interviews and is this something that we? Should have multiple interviews on?
Most of the jobs I've interviewed for that was an actual interview, they were interviewing multiple people. They gave you a time to show up and you show up and they come out and got you one at a time. When that interview's done, they come get the next one. That's a way to do it, but you got people sitting around and maybe contact a couple of them and have a couple more show up an hour later and.
Usually you don't see who else is.
I know. But the ones I've done, I've sat right in a waiting room with them.
Have you really?
Yep.
No, I've never had that, it's always been.
Every job I've ever had, somebody's called me and asked me to take it, so.
Oh, you're lucky that way.
Is there? Is there any? Any other input we're gonna need? At these interviews, is there anybody's opinion that matters besides the people they work with in the select board?
I don't think so, I think you need to just bite the bullet, hit the ground running. And, and just get your questions lined up and just, I mean, Josh doesn't have to have the same questions that you do. And Mike doesn't, you know what I mean, you could all have different questions. Um but yeah, I think you just need to go after it.
Well, I'm a, I'm a fan of, of scheduling a block of time.
Yeah.
And I think that forty minutes is plenty of time to talk to them and it gives us, if we did one, did them an hour path.
Yeah.
That gives us fifteen or twenty minutes to make notes, share with each other for a few minutes.
Yeah.
And even if the interview takes, interview takes a full hour, we just move on to the next one and discuss later.
Okay, so I think that's, I think that's the game plan.
Okay.
So now we need to pick a time and we need to figure out who we're notifying for interviews.
Right.
So I think that process looks like, I mean, I've gone down through and I, I personally have four picks. And I don't know what these guys have done, but.
I wanna say that's it, but I ain't looked at it in how long a week and.
Right, exactly.
I haven't really, I, I grazed this one.
Real quick. I read this one.
I didn't, I haven't been right through it yet.
So what if we look at the week of the ninth? Just because next week is really busy, if we look at the week of the ninth and schedule a couple.
Right.
Maybe two on Tuesday. Do a Wednesday, we could do Wednesday.
That following Wednesday would be a regular.
A regular meeting.
Works, that'd be a regular work session, wouldn't it?
And, yeah.
Cause next, next Wednesday is our select board meeting.
Right, so we have a board meeting, I have classes, we have a work session. Sammy is the deadline for Sammy's res- uh applications is the thirteenth, so the eighteenth you'd have. Those applications to go through if we, if we have any, I hope we do, but um.
I like the idea of being able to get through all of it in the same process. It's just, you know, for us, it's a lot, I mean, we gotta try to figure out how to get that other fifty hours of work. Weekend on top of this.
Exactly. I mean, I will do any day that you, you know.
And I'd rather not spread the two days out because I have so much going on that. If I've got it here, the next day, you know, we do these ones and.
It's almost easier to get out of work at two o'clock and do interviews and tell the robot.
That's what I'm game for, yeah, honestly, I'd, I'd.
I kinda am too.
Yeah, sit right in and do them, be that'll. If somebody can't do six at night, but they do two in the afternoon, you know, hopefully we can.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe that opposing Wednesday, that would be a work session, we could just do that.
Yeah.
Just do interviews. Yeah, it would be nice to be able to get through the town manager and the deputy clerk, interviews all in the same process.
Right, but that won't even be done, if we did it on, if we did interviews here, it won't be done.
Right, we won't have all of our applications.
Has it gone into the paper yet?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's on the website, it's on Facebook, um. It's in the newspaper, it should run again this week on the newspaper.
Okay, so we have a, we have a plan together, we just need to pick that date. And again, we really ought to just clear it with Mike before he's cemented in, but.
Well, we can technically tentatively put it, like, this is what we're gonna do and then check with him.
Right, I guess we can do it.
I said the eleventh, start them at two o'clock and.
Okay.
Wow, that's your day you're going.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, can you be back for two?
I can be back for three for sure.
So if we did three, so we, yeah, we'd be, we'd be done by eight.
Yeah, we'd be done in the norm, normal time.
Yeah, or earlier.
Okay, so.
Yeah, three o'clock, yeah, that's good. Send me a reminder on Tuesday, please.
Remind Josh.
Remind everybody.
Remind everyone. And we'll start at three and nail it from there.
And meanwhile, meanwhile, I'm gonna look at the pics that I've got and I will just communicate that with you.
Yeah.
These are the ones I'm interested in seeing and Josh can do the same, Mike can do the same, we take those people and that's who we interview.
Okay. I reckon that sounds like a plan.
Okay, moving on, item nine is road commissioner's report. This is, Josh is, is covering that base for us until we're there, the road commissioner.
Flan and Taylor, it's basically done, I mean, it's, he's got a couple hours in the morning just to, just to tidy up and then. That is done and over with, um. What is this culvert on Silver's Mills?
That would be Chelsea's, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so there's an issue with that and I really feel like we should take care of it. So. Chelsea and Craig wanted a. An extension put on, this goes all the way back to when uh. The guy had a partner, Jesus, Bailey, it's not Bailey, it's a.
Oh, yeah.
Seth Eldiken.
Yeah.
Was road commissioner and he was doing all the work at that time, um. They wanted an extension. But their culvert was bad, they were told they had to pay for the whole thing. So they said, okay, so Seth came out with an eighteen inch plastic culvert. Shoved it over a fifteen inch steel culvert. Put a piece plywood over the top of it. Covered over gravel and said, I'll be back sometime to do your other end and never came back. In the course, since then, they found out that the extension should be on them, which is the truth. The original culvert should be on us.
Right.
So now you've got a plugged up culvert because we've got a small one. Inside a big one and it's caused the dam twenty feet down there. And it's going over their driveway and if you pull onto Silver's Mills from twenty three. You'll see where all the material from that driveway, because it's going over, is built up. And it's causing the water to run down the edge of the tire and right there by the stop sign, it's starting to, where about that fire in, it's a road to the tire away. So I do think it's something that we should address.
I do too.
I mean, I, I'm in hopes that we can. I mean, they bought that first culvert, it's very hard to manipulate a plastic culvert without ruining it, you know. So I'm really in hopes that when we do do it, we can just clean up around the end, you know, even if we gotta take a little more time to do some handwork. So I'm really in hopes that when we do do it, we can just clean up around the end, you know, even if we're gonna take a little more time to do some handwork. And try to just shove another one onto it.
So I drove by there and looked and it was raining.
Yeah.
And it appeared to me like the water was going right down the road, right down, there's not much of a ditch there, it's just kind of flat.
Right, because all that material has. Washed down there and it's, yes, it's, it is going down the road and you can see where right on the edge of the road for quite a ways, it's, it follows the edge of the road and then. Then right at the stop sign, it's like it dives right in, you know? Be quite honest, I bet there's ten yards of gravel in that ditch.
In reality, it needs a culvert and a ditch.
Correct, which, quite honestly, that's a half an hour, forty-five minutes worth of ditching is, it's a hundred dollar bill. So.
So we're gonna make a decision on it?
So I would say you'd need to have a motion and a second to go ahead and have Scott go up and take care of it.
Yep.
And that's what I think, have, has anybody talked to Chelsea and Craig?
Yeah, I was up there the other night and had a conversation with them and that's how I knew about the piece of plywood and the.
Okay.
And the, uh, and what was done, cause when I got there and started looking at it, I'm like, what? It's steel on this end, it's plastic on this end and we got two different sizes, what is going on here, you know? So. Yep.
I make a motion that we, uh. Hire Scott to go fix it.
Second.
Vote. Okay.
So the, uh, oh yeah, go ahead, that's your, your.
Nope, go ahead, this is your report.
Okay, no, no, I'm not road commissioner. So. We've discussed it briefly before. We have potholes, line road on the pavement. Silver's Mills from your parents, just a little bit past. Down past jail block was, as you know, we're getting a lot of water this summer and I don't know if you know what water does when a tire hits it.
Hydraulic pressure.
Right, and where our potholes in the pavement are growing and Flanders Hill is opening up like. It's, I really feel like we need to. Send somebody to Bangor after a, maybe not a whole dump truck load, but a one ton dump truck load of cold patch.
Cold patch.
And go around and hit these areas because we, I mean, I, I, I know the ones on the line road will. Eat up the dills on my service truck. So, and there's, I know there's two on Flanders Hill. I haven't taken my service truck down, service mills to see if. That, I mean, and I don't purposely hit them, they're, it happens, you know? But I really, it's gotten out where, I mean, if a car, a couple of them, if a car, if a car tire goes into them, I, I'd get to believe that they could bottom out.
You know? So. In the past, who does our cold patch where we don't have public work?
Uh, so we, Scott's done it in the past, we've had Lawson's do some this spring, I guess, um, I think Newt's has done some.
So how do we go about, um. Deciding who does what and when they do it? I just contact him if he was willing to do it?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, in this case, I'm, I'm kind of basing it off a who's got a one ton dump. And that's either Scott or Lawson and. Scott lives in this town.
Yeah.
But that's, he, he's also.
And he's gonna be on Silver's Mills doing the other project.
Right.
He's on Flanders Hill currently.
Right. And he, and. I have got a lot of compliments about his work.
And so like.
I haven't heard any negative yet.
So is he gonna get cold patched for this Flanders Hill project he's doing right now?
There's, there's just a few spots there to do, yeah, and then there's like five holes on the line road. The other issue with line road is this right here, I don't know if you read this or not. She gave us this last week or the week before.
I think I did, you sent him an email, correct?
I did, and then I gave you copies too, I think.
So that's, this is the easier one to read from nineteen thirteen.
So I read halfway through that I did not get to complete it.
So if you read that. They left a hundred and sixteen rods at the northerly end, which. I haven't got out there with a tape measure yet, but I just did it with the pickup rough and that's all the pavement. We only ever split the dirt. That's why we, I've always said, why are we in charge of two thirds of this road? Sangerville shouldn't have two thirds of this road. Well, it's because nobody ever took the pavement. So. I would like at some point us to really look at this and then I would like. What, what I would like to see is Dover, Dover take the dirt and we take pavement. That's my personal thought, I mean, it may change with a discussion, but, um. As you know, it costs a lot more to do pavement than it does dirt. And I don't know why we've been taking care of two thirds of the road since nineteen thirteen. You know, um. So, I mean, I do think we should go patch some holes, cause I don't think we're gonna get Dover right now to go patch some holes for us, but. I think before we do anything and that, that section of road is bad, you know, we, we really should. Have a discussion between us and then I think it should be addressed with the selection from Dover.
Bring Dover into it.
Right.
So for the moment, we're gonna make a decision on. The cold patch and it makes sense to me if, if Scott's got to. Do some patching on the culvert he just did to, to do that all in one, one motion.
Right. Yeah.
Cold patch Flanders Hill that he just put the culvert in.
Right.
And the rest of the, the rest of the hotspots that need to be tended to.
Yep.
Because what's gonna happen, like you said, the water and the hydraulic pressure, but then we start plowing it.
It's gonna get worse.
Hook the cotton edge into it and.
Yeah.
Lay the pavement out in the ditch. I, I think we need to address it before, when.
Right. Yep.
Well, I'd make a motion that we, um, talk to Scott, make sure he's good with it, but. Have him do the cold patch. As he's doing this Flanders Hill thing and as he's addressing the Silver's Mills, he's gonna be right on those roads doing those projects and it just makes sense to have him do it all. I make a motion to hire Scott to, to address the potholes while he's doing the rest of them.
Second.
Vote. It's a vote.
Okay, since you're on roads, um, I'm not sure if Sam did this one or gave that one to you. It's a, the Edgely Road. And I don't know if I wrote that out right. Yeah, Edgely Road. Um, it's down near Santa Pond and they're saying, you know, it's fairly passable. But I don't know if it is a private camp road or if it is a town road.
Okay, so the Dickey camp is at the public landing.
But that's not.
She said they come in all the time and complain about it. And nothing's ever been done, but. I'm not familiar with the area, so I don't, I don't know.
Alright, so if you go down to the Santa Pond Public Landing, you know where the little circle is where you turn?
I have no idea where you are.
You know where my father lives?
Nope.
Okay, you are lost.
Oh, yeah, I'm lost.
I'm gonna bring up with.
Google map.
No, OnX, hunt map.
So when you go down to the Edgely Public Landing on Santa Pond, there's two camp roads right beside each other. This has always been a controversy, having lived there my whole life as a kid.
Sure.
The first road goes down to the public landing. The second road goes down and makes a right and goes down the whole shore of Santa Pond.
Okay.
Which would be the south shore.
Okay.
See if it's two roads side by side?
Yeah.
That's what he's talking about and then that one goes down.
So here is the problem, halfway down Marvin Edgely's house, fill it up a little bit. This is Marvin Edgely's house.
Okay.
Right here, the two roads connect, Marvin built a driveway from the road on the other side. Crossing the road that goes to the public landing, so. The road, the second road, all the camp owners have put a bunch of money in that road. And the two roads are side by side and people go into the public land and will take the second road and then cross over, cause it's really nice. Well, the people that are paying for that road are not happy about that.
Oh, okay, well, I can understand that.
This, Mr. Dickey's camp, if you go down, there's a circle right here where you turn around to back your boat in the water.
Okay, yeah, they were talking about that.
Yeah, his camp is over here. There's a camp right here beside the public landing and then his camp is over here. You come down, you can turn around, back your boat in, there's a circle, but what happens is when you come down here. You've got to drive across that funny little circle to get to the Dickey camp. People will put their boat in the water and leave the trot and the boat trailer and everything right across this driveway and just leave it there and go boating.
Oh, sure, sure. Instead of moving it out when.
That, that Edgely Road, none of those roads over there even, is, do we do anything with the Anderson Road? Cause the, so the Anderson Road.
The Anderson Road, the Newt's plow down to the bog, I believe.
They do, okay, I, I wasn't sure on that.
I don't wanna be wrong.
That hits the.
Okay.
So yeah, this is actually where Mike Gould lives, out here, that's his driveway. And then there's the first road and the second road, Dale Gray's camp's right there. But I believe Newt's plowed down and there's a turnaround for the plow truck right at that second road.
Well, yeah, there is, you can see it right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think.
No, not at all.
You know where Silver's Mills is on twenty-three?
Yes.
Turn on Silver's Mills and you come right down. It's a couple of miles.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I wish Mike was here because he lives there and he, he knows more about it than all of us put together.
But, yeah, I guess we'd have to. The boat landing road, I don't, I didn't think any of them roads over there were.
So. So we, as far as I know, we do not do any maintenance on the public landing road.
I didn't think so, but I wasn't sure.
I think one time Dale went and bush hogged it or something, I think.
There was, yes, yes.
But I don't think we normally do any maintenance on it. And I'm not quite sure what, are they asking us to maintain the road and fix the potholes?
They.
Or regulate the traffic at the boat launch?
They really just kind of wanted to have the potholes fit, filled, like something smoothed out, graded, something.
Here's the problem.
You do it for one camp road, you gotta do it for all the camps.
Well, and that goes to our public landing, so it's different than other camp roads, but here is the problem. There is absolutely no gravel left on that road. There is nothing to grade. It's ledge and it's rocks and it's potholes and.
Oh, you, all, everything's all gone?
There is nothing left of that road. That's why everybody went over and started juicing the new road and crossing over at Marvin Edgely's and going to the public landing. Because they're avoiding, the ledge sticks right up and small cars will bottom out going over it, going down to the public landing, it's, there is no gravel on that road.
So is there an association at the, that, they, everyone pulled their money together and fixed the road?
So there's only three places on that road, Marvin Edgely's. And he contributes to the other road, is my understanding, he contributes to the other road so he can use it.
Ah, okay.
Which leaves, I think there's two or three camps at the public landing on that road. The other road goes down around the corner and that's nice, that they have an association, they take care of their own road. But the public landing road has, I think there's two camps, so there might be three down there. And the road has absolutely zero maintenance, zero gravel, there's no way to fill potholes in the home dirt. So it would have to be a budgeted deal.
Oh, yep.
To, to do work on that road, I would think.
I would think, yeah.
You'd have to take your own budget and figure out where the money's coming from, but you're gonna need. If you're out there right now, you'll see what I mean.
Nah, I'm probably gonna go out and look at it, cause if I don't do it, I'll forget about it.
Well, you're gonna be on Silver's Mills anyways. But, once you ride down there, you'll see, you'll see everything I'm saying, you'll, you'll understand.
You're right.
And in truth, it is unfair for all the people in the town to travel down that association. They know beautiful, their road is beautiful. But, you know, it's, there's a couple times a year when it gets soft and they've got everybody bringing their boats down their road and they're trying to keep it pristine and I get it.
But it's not really our public boat landing, that's not the town's public boat landing, that's just a public boat.
My understanding of the, the Edgely farm that my parents own, gave that piece, that piece to the town for a public landing, a public access to the.
We put the, is there a dock down there?
We have a dock.
We put a dock in, or we put a dock in down here?
Yep, and we put cement, this, um, cement strips.
Yeah.
To back your boat trailer out on to. Yep, and we, we put a dock out, in and out down there.
Okay.
So.
So we should make the road passable, passable, at, at.
At best.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't know where we stand on that as far as our responsibility to do it. I mean, in a perfect world, if we had. Money, we didn't know what to do, it'd be a great place to put it, but, I don't know what our responsibility is.
Right, exactly. And I don't know how you.
And I think we need to figure that out first and then move on from there.
Well, I tried, I tried finding that book that you had talked about, that Jeff said there was a book. Up in the town garage of all the roads and I can't, I couldn't find it.
Really?
I spent an hour up there going through folders and.
File cabinets.
File cabinets, I couldn't find nothing.
Well, I did dig around, there are folders of roads in a filing cabinet in the office. The one, it's over, I finally got a chance to actually get into it and it's over in the corner, behind, by the copy machine.
Cause it, it would be nice, I mean, I know there's some roads that we don't maintain that are still our road, you know?
And there's a folder for every single road in that filing cabinet.
I think that's, for this complaint, I think the first thing we need to do is figure out what our responsibility is.
And then go from there.
And then go from there.
Yep.
Um, one of the, one, this is a two-part complaint. They're complaining about the potholes. And they're complaining about people leaving that truck and trailer for the weekend, blocking access to that camp. Now that, we could do, we could do something about with some signage.
Right, and I, I was gonna actually say, we should, if we own the boat landing, we should put signage up, cause we probably don't own that circle piece. Maybe we do, but.
I don't know, my father might know what, the, the people that owned the farm are the ones that left it to the town.
Yeah, and the tax, well, the tax maps will show real quick what's, what.
Okay, so I guess this, this particular complaint, we'll just leave it at where, um, see what our responsibility is for the road. You know, again, you don't wanna set precedent on a road that we have no responsibility for. And we go in and build this road and then everybody else puts their hand out, because two camps got a brand new road paid for by the town.
Right.
You've gotta figure out how to balance that and what that looks like, so we need, we need to know our responsibility. But I think as far as, um, signage, you know, please do not, you know, some signage there from the town.
Carry on, carry on.
I mean, what's that, that road ain't even a half mile in there, is it?
Probably just about.
Be one of them things that if you could put, say you put four loads on every year, just tailgate spread it, you know, you're only putting. Two, three inches, that way you're getting four or five hundred feet out of a load.
And, and this been, this, this is a controversial point, there's, the people that are paying for the other road. Are upset with the amount of traffic on their road that does not benefit them. And the people in the town are not gonna go down that cow path when there's a nice, big, wide, beautiful road on the other side. And the roads, the roads are fifteen feet apart, they're right beside each other.
Yeah.
There's a stone wall down between them.
That's a hard one.
It is, but I think. We'll have to just look at the situation and see what would be appropriate for signage, if there's a place where people can park or they just plain can't park their vehicles in.
Who, who called you, Brenda or Raymond?
They actually came in, they were in the office.
Both of them together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they came in to do some registration, give their taxes.
Ask some questions.
Just, you know, kind of a general conversation. Just, you know, kind of a general conversation, they weren't mad or upset, they're just like, they come in all the time, they were asking, you know. And the condition of their own and, you know, they were very nice, they didn't, they weren't mean or anything, they just.
I tell you a lot of.
I frustrated.
I wish there was a different word than complaint, cause I feel like I've only received two or three. You know, to me, a complaint is somebody irritated and they they need it fixed and, you know. I mean, it is a complaint, but it's, you know, sometimes I wish there was a different word, we we could separate some of these with, but.
Uh, yeah, a suggestion. This is a suggestion.
Help.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I I'll go see him, maybe they can show me the road, what what they're talking about and. And I'll look at the tax maps and see. Cause I, I mean, the the public boat landing could have been deeded over to us, but the road might never been. You know, that, that's another thing we could.
That's what we need to know.
Right.
I think the only thing that we can do at this point is look at um. If there's no room for people to leave their truck and trailer, the appropriate signage that says, this is a launch only, this is not a parking area or something.
Right.
To that effect, cure the problem, I know exactly what they're talking, I know these people, I know this camp, I worked for my uncle when he built the camp and. I know what they're talking about, people are dumping their boat in the water, pulling the truck and trailer right across their driveway and leaving it there. For the weekend.
For the weekend, sure.
And this is not right.
Yeah, cause there is a few places on that pond that are boat in only a few lots, correct?
Very few now.
Yeah.
I think, I think all of them are accessible, way down in the cove, uh down by Lance Johnson's camp. There was a bunch of lots and they're not accessible and. I was out on the boat for the first time a couple of years, a couple of weeks ago, went around the pond. And they put a road in that goes right to Kittredge Hill, right to the water. I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
I can't believe they got a permit to do it.
Yeah, really.
And that, all those lots weren't accessible, well, now there's a road that goes right to them, so I think pretty much the whole pond's accessible by vehicle.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the end of your report, Josh.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Any other concerns brought to you? All the ones brought to me showed up.
The only one I went up to address was the one at the intersection up here. And I knocked on the door and I could see him through the window and I could hear him talking and they wouldn't come to the door.
Really?
So I didn't really think that that brush at the. In the ditch was a big deal at that point, you know.
Nope, not at all. So at the town meeting, we had put out um committee signups. We've gotten five on the park. We have seven for the budget, we have one for the forestry and we have none for roads. But I got a call from um Danny Gray who wanted to make us aware that. At one point in time, probably ten years ago, they had an economic development committee. And didn't know if um that would be another committee that the board would like to see started back up again. The one thing that Sammy wanted to know is, do we want to put something on the website or um the Facebook page saying. If you wanna become part of the committee, so these are the committees, please call the office to sign up.
I I honestly, I think that would be a great thing.
Now, this, this was a, when Danny told you about it, was it a separate committee or was it? Was it a group of the rec committee that just extended out or?
Nope, it was a separate committee, yeah, a separate committee. And she said, you know, maybe the two committees now, the the building committee has kind of morphed into the two. But she said the economic committee um would like get beams to come or they would get something, you know, one in the town. Try to bring something to the town, start a river fest or, you know, that type of stuff, um but I wrote it up just. Just kind of an FYI type of deal.
Yep, that's cool.
We also, I had sent. I had sent Josh an email concerning the abatement that you denied the last meeting. And this is his response to that. Cause I I wanted to know, what what do I do with this, do, does he write a letter to the people or, you know, what what is the next step? And this is my answer. Again, just FYI.
I I don't. As far as looking back at the past. Waterfront is nothing like the past, you can't even compare it to the past, you know, I mean. Spots that are bog or people are with enough money are getting approved to be filled in and so they can have waterfront property. You know, I mean bog up to a pond, they, you know, they're managing to make it happen, so I don't. This is that piece we were. Off the parkman's side.
I remember.
Yep. More question, yeah.
I just wanted to make you aware of that, um the piece last time I had told you that I had two. Abatements that I wasn't positive about, these abatements are Nichols Chambers and Mark Briswald. And I don't believe they've signed them yet, there was the wrong owner, it was assigned to the wrong piece of land. So these two are just simply straightening out, getting the bills to the right person.
Okay, so there's no.
There's no refunds, no, it's just a matter of getting them moved to the right place.
Okay. Doesn't make a bit of difference, we're all equal.
And that's it for anything that I have other than the executive session.
Okay, do we have, do we have the statute?
It is one M S R A. I think it's four oh five subsection six. I can't bring that. Let's see if I've got it ready. See, I'm not sure if Jack, I'm not sure, that's what I was given. I think it's H two.
I should have, I should have caught that and had that all worked out.
I know, me too. I'm sorry, I opened your mail, I flipped all the mail upside down. And I was like, wait a minute. I had to say.
I don't see it on the machine.
Yeah, I don't have a definite, I know it's the subsection six.
Take just two seconds and mark it up.
I still say.
Hold on, I'll just look it right up, I just want it to be correct, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely, um. I thought I had it, but.
That is not, that's not the correct number.
I did ask for the boat. The sand pile invoice, correct?
Yeah, it's on, yeah.
Okay, I'm staying right after, um Scott's gonna give me one tomorrow for Flanders Hill.
Okay.
He's gonna do it as soon as he's done. I know you won't be until Monday, but. Where we're tight on that side, I'd really like him right there so we know where we're at.
Yep, and I gave you, this is the updated stuff, um that other one that I showed you. Comes out of the program, that's all up to date with today's bills.
Is that including what Chris brought in the other day?
Not this one, we have the other one that I gave you, that one there, this was, that one's all up to date.
I like this one, cause it's got colors. And dividing lines.
I will get this one updated, um so that you have exactly where we're at.
Hopefully that female money will come soon.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully.
Soon to read it, huh, I, so title, it's under title thirty six. I didn't see, I didn't see the rest of it in there. We've just never done one of these before, so.
No, exactly, and like I said, this is the first title twelve, section four eight oh seven dash A. Under title thirty six.
This is title thirty six.
Yep, part two, chapter one oh five.
Title thirty six, chapter one oh five.
Yep. Section four eight, four eight oh seven A, yes.
Chapter one oh five. Alright, moving on to item eleven. Executive session to discuss a poverty abatement application. This is title thirty six, chapter one oh five, section four eight oh seven A. I make a motion to go to executive session for discussion.
Second.
Vote.
The time.
It is. Seven forty three. We're going into executive. Okay, it's eight thirteen, we're returning from executive session. In session, we reviewed an application for abatement for hardship, poverty or inability to pay. Title thirty six, MRS subsection eight forty one, eight forty nine, um the decision. Is as follows. I make a motion, we do a partial abatement. On this application.
Second.
Vote. We voted to do a partial abatement for hardship and poverty. Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.